I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, meeting is called to order. We have a perfect attendance. I'm here. Deputy Supervisor Ron Feller is here. Councilwoman Sherry Melick is here. Councilwoman Cindy Boss is here. And Councilwoman Kristen Brown is here. Our attorney, our esteemed attorney, is here. Guy Farina, representing the Chief of Police, is here. Sean Mear is our Highway Superintendent. Eli Wang is in the house. How you doing? All right? And our clerk, Tara Stipples. First things first, very exciting stuff is happening. We are going to, after just seven weeks of being in office with our new board, we've gone through two different firms, we saw presentations, we got lots and lots of feedback from the community, from each other, obviously, a lot of questions were raised, and over thirty applications were submitted for individuals who wanted to be part of our Comprehensive Plan Committee. So we're really proud that we're going to be formally putting this committee together. I will be asking for a motion to appoint the Comprehensive Plan Committee. I first want to go through each member and give a little bit about who they are. I mean, just a quick sentence on the background. Not really, but our committee chair will be Councilwoman Cindy Boss. Members of the nine-member committee will include Councilwoman Kristen Brown, Planning Board Chairman Fred Reichel, Zoning Board Chairman and Local Attorney John Fallon. We had a member of the 2003 Comprehensive Plan Committee that we thought was important to have on this committee. That was a seven-member committee, and the individual from that committee who's going to be on our new one is Mark Hoyt, former town councilman. We also have Karina Tipton, an environmental engineer and founding member of Residents Protecting Montgomery, a community organization. Jane Samuelson, another professional engineer. Arthur Emerson, an IT specialist, an all-around nice guy. And Faith Moore, Executive Director of Orange County Rural Development Advisory Corporation. We have representation from the villages of Walden and the villages of Montgomery, as well as members throughout the entire town. Councilwoman Brown actually had post-its and a map, just kind of showcasing just how spread out we were in representing a majority of the area. So we're really excited about that, from a geographical standpoint, from a background standpoint, from representing the villages and the town. We think we have a really awesome committee, so I'd love to entertain a motion to appoint those nine committee members with Councilwoman Cindy Boss as Chair.
I'll make that motion.
Cindy Boss.
I'll second it.
I'm sure that question was, do you need to recuse yourself?
Yes.
Okay. You guys are good, though, right?
You don't need to recuse yourself.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I...
You made the motion.
Ron, seconded it.
All right, motion carried. Also, we are selecting our firm. We had two really amazing presentations. It was a tough decision, but this board felt very comfortable selecting Nelson Pope and Voorhees LLC. This firm recently and currently is supporting neighboring towns' planning efforts in the town of Shangam in Ulster County, towns of Tuxedo, Mamakating, Monroe, and Blooming Grove, all interested in their long-term planning. And we're really excited to have them work with us. Bonnie is actually, was recently also appointed to the Planning Board to be their planner, so there's going to be some continuity there in terms of our plan and our consultants working on both ends there. So we're excited about that. I know we have a resolution specific to the firm. This is a resolution of the Town Board of the Town of Montgomery, authorizing the supervisor to accept the proposal of Nelson Pope and Voorhees LLC to serve as professional planning consultants with respect to the town's update to the comprehensive master plan. There were hourly rates that were set aside in this proposal. They were specific to the individuals that would be present. And also, it was explained and expressed to me, and some, as part of our discussions, negotiations, if you will, that if there were two of them present, in terms of the partners, whether it be Max and Bonnie, that they would, we would not be charged for both fees for that meet if they both are present. So that's something that we talked about and they were comfortable with. I think that will really lower the bottom line a little bit. Also, it was a good back-and-forth in terms of if we found different areas of service that the county could provide or other outside organizations could provide at no cost or less cost, they would be absolutely willing to work with those agencies and they have other plans. So that number, that equaled to that ninety thousand, and we have budgeted a hundred, that can absolutely be chopped up if we identify as a committee or as a board, different resources available to help offset that cost. Anybody have any questions before we make a motion on the resolution? Yeah?
Just a quick thing. I know we had spoken about it, but I don't remember if we talked about it with the whole board, but the Commissioner of Planning, Dave Church, didn't recommend Zach Coleman. That would be a late liaison between the Planning Department and the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Are we okay with having him as...
I think at the end of the day, for me, that's probably something that could get handled at the committee level between you guys, because I don't, I don't believe we'd be paying for that service, right? It's just you guys reaching out to get another resource that could save us money.
I just didn't know if that had to be approved.
No, good question. I don't think... Will? Okay.
Just for the record on that, I'm not on the committee, but I know Zach Coleman personally. He's a real good kid.
Oh, good.
Used to be my next-door neighbor. He's all for his father, Chico.
He is really excited. I guess it came up in our department.
Actually, he's, his grandfather was a teacher at Occidental Bond. Mrs. Farm, grandmother, I should say.
James Farm.
His mother, Mrs. Loder, that's his grandmother.
Yes, but...
I mean, a couple of things. The committee will be empowered to consult with whoever they think and bring people in who they believe will help them do the job in the best way and the quickest way. So certainly bringing in individuals from the county will be part of the mission of the committee. Two things that, one, you may wish to point out to the board, a couple of things to point out to the board. The final contract with Nelson Pope, and I put it in the resolved portion, may involve moving up the meeting schedules a little bit to make them a bit more frequent.
So we...
Which is what Bonnie and you discussed.
Correct. So in our discussions, I made it very clear that we wanted to not rush the process, but have a more condensed schedule. So we absolutely will be doing two meetings a month, as opposed to monthly meetings.
When possible.
When possible, as I was, as I was writing, but that's, that's the goal. And the goal is to cut that time, I don't know if it's going to be in half, but at the end of the day, we hope to have with our zoning and Seeker and all of the items that we need to do, to have this done in a year. And that's very ambitious, but that is the goal. Especially with the potential more foreign discussions that we have.
The other item that you may wish to point out to the board and to the public that's here tonight is the fact that this is, this comprehensive plan update and all that will also include work on an infrastructure plan as well, water and sewer, which our engineers will be tasked with helping.
So hand-in-hand goes our water and sewer plan. That is going to be an additional fee and additional endeavor. And we have heard the presentation of Delaware Engineering, who currently are our engineers for the town. Should we go in a different direction for engineer of the town and then contract them as consultants for water and sewer? They are absolutely interested and excited to work with our Comprehensive Plan Committee to also put together a master plan for water and sewer. And the hope is that they will be able to identify some grants and some other revenue streams to offset that cost. But the goal is to have them parallel and be, and be done together, working together. That is the goal for this year, 2020. Thank you, Will.
Will we, will we, will we be okay in that line? Because I think it was only a hundred thousand in that line that was appropriated from last year's budget.
You're talking about consultants for water and sewer? Yeah, we're going to work on that. And I think at the end of the day, if you have the grants to come in, it's, it's just a little bit of accounting that you got to figure out. It'd be, we'd come to a potential issue if we didn't get some grant funding, and we'd have to make a decision. In which case, we'll bring it back to the board for one of our meetings or work sessions and figure out what we're going to do. But I think they both have to happen, certainly, together. Okay. Motion, right? Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, motion carried. Now, for anyone who saw the agenda and didn't get any of the, you know, notification in terms of what our plans were, we aren't really ready for the Medline petition right now, but because there was a date set for the public hearing, our plan is to just make a motion to open the public hearing and then make a second motion by consenting applicant and the town to continue the public hearing for March 5th at 7:00 PM or sometime thereafter. There's some current negotiations that are going on right now. I don't think we're prepared to give you the information that you need to comment appropriately on it. So our plan is to, as prepared, on March 5th, have a bit of an overview of what it is that the, both of these things entail. And also, it gives us some time to try to get a little bit more for the town in terms of our value and, and while we're potentially looking into these two items. So that's the plan right now. And I would just ask for a motion and then a second motion right after that. It would be for, to open up a public hearing for Medline petition to extend nearly town water, West Water District Number Two.
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried. Second motion would be to, by consent of the applicant and the town, continue this public hearing for March 5th, 7:00 PM or sometime thereafter.
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried. Second, same thing. Motion to open the public hearing for Medline petition to extend Sewer District Number One.
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried. Second motion to continue, consent of applicant, by consent of applicant and the town, to continue public hearing for March 5th, 7:00 PM or sometime thereafter.
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried. We are certainly doing our due diligence on that one, and we want to make sure when we present it to the public and we have your comments, that you're able to appropriately comment and have all the information you need. All right.
There are two different public hearings, one for water, one for sewer.
Correct. And there's a lot to read, there's a lot to go through. We have been working on it for quite a while since we got in, but we're just not ready yet for that, for the bulk comment. We will be, we will be by the 5th.
And there'll be presentations that evening.
Correct. Correct. All right. So what we're going to do now is for the old business and new business items, the business of the board, this is, for work sessions, meant to be productive and give the public an opportunity to make better our conversations and provide input specific to the old business items and the new business items. So on March 5th, when we have our public comment, more general, comment on anything you'd like, but for the purpose of the work sessions, we wanted to afford you an opportunity to make some comments just on these items. All right? So I will ask you to stop and wait for March 5th or submit an email or talk to me privately if you, if we go off course, just to respect everybody's time. So does anyone from the public have a comment on any of our old business or new business items? Please come up, take a seat. Come on, Don. Take us off.
Good evening, everyone. Don Berger, Montgomery, New York. My first one is obviously on the moratorium. And what I want to say about the moratorium, as I said at the previous work session last month, that session I implored this board to move on the moratorium, and you didn't do that. You keep pushing it down the road like a soccer ball, and I'm really concerned about that. And I think that there is underlying reasons why you're kicking the ball down the road. I can't say that I'm in favor of some of those reasons, that I think I perceive the reasons to be. But I will say that what concerns me is just like a moment ago you said about Medline and that you're in negotiations. I hate that word, negotiations. Negotiations means, means to me that you've already made a decision, but you're just trying to get a better deal. That's all that means. And I'm really, really concerned by that, because we, and when I say we, I'm talking about the residents here in the town of Montgomery, have been talking endlessly, exhaustingly, for months and months and months about this moratorium. We've been asking for this moratorium, although this board has taken the right steps to actually start talking about it, and I appreciate that. The problem I have is that I truly believe you're kicking that ball down the road a little bit here. And I really would like you to act on that. And what I did at the last meeting was, all I simply asked you guys to do was to create a date for a public hearing at this meeting, and I'm asking you to do the same thing. Firm up a date for that public hearing for your next meeting. I think that's not too much to ask. I think with the work that has to be done, we, and when I say we, I guess I'm speaking for Residents Protecting Montgomery, we are, one of our main things is that moratorium. And we've been slapped around a little bit through the previous administration. This administration here has worked with us, but you've been, I believe, overly cautious. And I have, one other thing I want to bring up, and it, I'm going to put it under the ethics law issue. Back in November, me, you, and Karina sat down, we had a long conversation. And part of the reason for that meeting was that I used the term olive branch. And I said I was reaching out to you, because it had been a very tough election. A lot of things were said, but I wanted to extend that olive branch to let you know, me and you have talked about this many, many times, about working together. And gratefully, I see that this board is working, and this is an entirely different board. And what I mean by that, although there are some members that represent last year's, you're different. All right? And that's the fact. You guys are different, you're thinking different, you're acting different, and it's a much freer board, and it's a pleasure to be here and working with you guys. With that being said, I'm in possession of a letter that was submitted to the Planning Board and to you, Mr. Supervisor, from Mr. Richard Horton. I'm not sure if the rest of the board is aware of this letter. The letter's about me. And he uses the word loathe about me. You familiar with the letter?
No.
Your name's on it.
Go ahead and, and I don't know...
I'm not going to read the letter.
Okay, okay.
I didn't get it.
I'll give you copies.
Is this a political letter?
No, this is about meetings and how meetings are conducted, and what we believe to be that some meetings, because of the special meetings and what we believe to, when the quorum is taken outside and...
Oh, okay. I actually know exactly what you're referencing there. Okay.
Well, my problem with this letter is, the letter's false, but other than that, I'm not, you know, we could, that's for Albany to determine that.
Sure.
Not for Richard Hoyt, not for me, not for you. I'm concerned by the word loathe.
Sure.
That here's a representative of this town, an attorney, that speaks of my correspondence and me, as in that he loathes me.
Okay.
That's disgraceful. I am, although we all know that I've been on a different side of some of these issues that we have in this town, I have come to believe that we can work together, and I have extended that olive branch. We don't have to agree, but you know why? I don't care what you talk about in your own home about me, or I talk about you, that's in the confines of a home, but certainly when you have correspondence in this town and you use that type of language, that's disgraceful. You should not talk to me in that, or talk about me in that manner. And I certainly would hope that you must, or will reprimand him on that, I think, or at least talk to him.
Absolutely.
Because I, I, I just don't think that's the way it should be done, and it was disappointing for me to see something like that. And by the way, when you use a person's name in a letter, you're obligated to send a copy of that letter to the person you're speaking about. He did not do that. This man's an attorney, and we have had problems with the attorneys on certain boards. I will say that, Will, you're a gentleman every time we talk, and I think you talk to this group here, residents. I believe that he respects the residents. I will tell you that Mr. Hoyt, based on this letter and the IDA attorney, they sometimes do talk down to us, and that's not their job.
What's the date of that?
The date is January 31st.
Yeah. I know which one you're talking about now. I'll definitely get into it.
I have a couple of copies I'll give to you.
Thanks, Don.
I do. I think that, Don?
Sure.
On the moratorium, going back to the first one. I can tell you, without getting into a lot of detail, that there are four different opinions here on certain things that have to be in that moratorium and certain things that shouldn't be in that moratorium. And that's part of the reason for the delay. So if we go on with four different mindsets into executive session or voting here, and we're not on, at least on the same page before we come here, I don't want to sit up here and beat up people, and they don't want to beat me up. We have to get our minds...
Ron, I would agree with you, but there's been three meetings here on the moratorium, and I've seen the members of this board flip-flop on how they feel about the moratorium. You know, I mean, I've seen it flip-flopped in one meeting. Well, I guess all I'm saying is if, I, I, I agree with you, but if that's his...
We had a letter from our attorney with some recommendations.
Right.
And, and some people are of the opinion that they want to value and go with what the attorney may or may not say, and other people may say, you don't have to go with that, and it's been, hasn't been the easiest process.
What I will say to you, Don, is we're going to be, we're going to, I think personally, we'll get there tonight, even if we have to extend the conversation. I think we've gotten from the Planning Board what we need, we've gotten from our attorney what we need, we've talked internally, we've talked one-on-one, and I think we're ready to move forward. I think we're going to make some decisions tonight on how we feel, and stay tuned.
I would appreciate that.
All right.
Okay, guys.
Thanks, Don.
Ladies.
You'll give us a copy of that letter, Don?
Right now.
Thank you.
Anyone else on anything related to our old business and new business items? Yeah? Come on up. Don't worry, just state your name for the record, please, for our clerk.
Wendy Curtis, Montgomery. And I really just want to remind you that this whole moratorium thing came about because we didn't want Medline here. And I feel like to grant or even consider granting any sort of water, sewer, any sort of approvals would be just complicating things. Right now, they have nothing. They don't have seater. The only thing they have is land that they bought prematurely, so we really don't owe them anything. So I just want to urge you to consider that the moratorium was spurred on because of Medline. So we can't exclude that from this process. Excuse me? Thanks.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Oh, do I see any of that? Come on up, Shuri.
Good evening, boys. Shuri's a hot guest. How are you? I would like to speak to a couple of things. One, thank you for the podium at the meeting. That's, I know that's per se, not this business. I'd like to thank Sean for his quick reaction from the other night. That's a real positive when you feel that when you communicate, you're heard and you're acted upon. With that being said, I'd like to speak to the moratorium in each of you. You have a voice and you have concerns. We do need it rapidly. We need to verify that what we have going forward into the comprehensive plan, that there's enough land to really navigate, especially in our industry. You've heard me say this before. I've heard some concerns of residents here speaking out as to their right to make good on their property. That was one of the last public meetings on the moratoria. A person came in from Jersey, and they invested in the land, and they had extreme concerns that they won't be able to move their farm on if this moratoria occurs. I just want to say to the board, I'm sure you're familiar with a lot of the zoning, warehousing is only one component of being an I-1 or an I-2. And we have to also remember that those who walk for canvassing the residents that belong in the towns and the villages, one of the priorities that they said in their deepest concerns was the number of warehouses. I'm not necessarily saying size, it's the number. It is a concern. You do not feed your child nothing but potato chips and expect them to be healthy. We know that the majority of what's coming into this town, when you truly look at it, our ratables, our diversity, is based on warehousing and trucking. Now, that's not wrong. We have a really great place for that. But at what point do we stop becoming discriminatory to a well-balanced town? And what can we do with those uses before we commit these things? That, I think, is really the crux of what we're asking as a resident. You know, I believe you said you found that in your canvas, that it was the number-one concern of residents. I believe you, Mr. Feller, also stated that you came across that, you, of course, being here. I'm sure you're aware, and you as well. So for us to sit at this table, and I know you're going to hopefully make a positive decision tonight, the problem is not just the size, it's with the locations. And that all comes down to feeding into the comprehensive plan. Do I like being a resident with a warehouse across the street? Absolutely not. Because regardless of what the reality states here, I have spoken to those same kind of groups, and any research you do, your home immediately within a quarter mile of those warehouses will in fact decrease in its value. I just think we, as a town, I had said to the Planning Board, it's a sophomoric argument that they would allow warehouses next to residents because the stewardish, the stewardship and their knowledge of the land and their care for the equality and the benefit of all residents, which is our tax base. The value of my home goes down, the value of my taxes that I pay can also be petitioned to go down. It's this that we're holding in our hand as we go forward to make this moratorium decision. So size is important. What we have is becoming limited, is our industrial lands are becoming used up. I am familiar, and you can look. The Planning Board has stated that the occurrences of these applications in the past year or so has been unprecedented. I have experienced where I have gone through and in my own secret process, examined paperwork that is being accepted that is inferior. Inferior because descriptions on those documents are incorrect. They describe things to the west that aren't to the west. They say things are here when they're not there. I am saying that in this moratoria, we need to slow down and check ourselves. And since warehouses is a major component of what's coming in, I urge you to consider it. And those residents who want to make good on their property, there are uses, like churches, hotels, motels, offices, restaurants, storage yards, daycares, libraries. So while people seem to panic and say, oh my God, I can't have, my, my, my land can't be sold, I think that's what we're doing with the moratoria in harmony with this comprehensive plan. We're going to get our footings right, our rules right, our stewardship of the land. Maybe we want before buffered between any residential area. These are the things as a town we need to create. These are the concerns I have, because I also know in addressing other situations and examining, I have found that the inspector hasn't even been able to examine some of the site plan documents because he's...
We're definitely working on that, I will tell you. That's something that we're taking in a different direction. And we're looking to beef up our building department as well.
That's awesome.
So that's something that we're going to do in tandem. Is there anything else?
No, I just wanted to say to you why I feel it was very important, as you consider this moratoria. It affects people, it's going to affect our town, it affects the diversity of the ratable. And as far as people not getting jobs because they're not here, on Indeed, I've said this before, in the warehouse sector of approximately fifteen dollars an hour, within twenty-five to fifty miles, there are over three thousand to four thousand job openings. So if people are so desperate for that work, it's there. At least right now, the economy's good. So let's take this forward, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Shuri. Appreciate it. Any other final comments on the old business and new business items? Yes, ma'am?
Beth Hefner, Town Montgomery. I would like to encourage you to move forward on the moratorium, to work out whatever unsureness or differences you have and speed it along. I say that as in how the public health and safety. Right now, you know, industry is, has its advantages, for sure, but with it comes pollution. The claims of the mitigation in these plans is not always what it seems. Future of the watershed depends on it. We're looking at elimination of soil, permeable surfaces, wildlife, trees, habitat destruction. Look at the cumulative effects of the Waukeah River. The runoff and the flooding. This past summer, we had a lot of harmful algae blooms. That is a serious public health matter, so please move along and consider this for the sake of... That is a serious public health matter. So please move along and consider this for the sake of future generations. Thank you.
Anyone else on the, uh, old business or new business items? Alright, we're gonna move forward now and the first item on the agenda, A, uh, moratorium. So we have our memo from the planning board. It was a confidential entry of department memo. And we're gonna go through each of those items to a degree and then we're gonna have a discussion on any disagreements we have. So I just wanna bring it up with, uh, with Will and we'll start with, with, uh, his opinion on some of the recommendations from a legal standpoint. And then from the board, if there's anyone who disagrees with any of these recommendations and we'll just go down the line. So the first one is, uh, pretty much with definitions, uh, just making sure that we clearly define warehouses. There's different uses, uh, example, you know, flex space, stuff like that. And it really just cleans up any of the potential names that are not warehouses or distribution facilities, but also could be exactly what we're, we're afraid of. Um, Will, do you have any issue with adding some of those definitions or clearing that up?
No, I can make some cross references from the code.
Okay. Any of the board have any issues with that? I thought that was pretty clean. Alright. Same thing, um, this had more to do with zoning and this spoke to an issue we had of potentially not hurting a little guy in terms of, uh, the types of warehouses and, you know, those with up to two truck docks or bays and those with up to three or more. Uh, Will, did you have any specific thoughts on the language to this point?
No, I think if the board is okay with this, like, that's really gonna depend on a sort of a policy decision of the board, but I can incorporate the language as directed by the board. There's no legal issue for that.
I think it's a good add. Kristen, did you have any questions on it?
Uh, can we come back to it? Can we go through the rest of it and then come back to that?
We can do that.
Because I think that's gonna be a larger talk on size.
Sure. Uh, okay, number three is just grammatical. Uh, four is, you can, you can talk about that a little bit, Will, if you'd like, just in terms of cleaning it up.
Yeah, there was just a, a comment, uh, from the introductory section to including subdivision platte, making the language consistent. So I can do that little bit of cleanup there.
Okay. Five's the big one. Do you wanna skip that one and just finish the other three? Let's just go through the other ones, um, first. So six is the hardship. Uh, with, they thought it'd be proactive for us to insert, insert, insert an effective date. I mean, me and Will didn't really seem to have an issue with it if you guys don't. It'll allow us not to be flooded in the interim if they know it's a specific date that you can actually create or file for hardship.
Just so the public's aware of that one, uh, the recommendation of the planning board here is that any hardship applications from, uh, potential developers, uh, can't come in until the local law takes effect.
That's all.
So, and that's fine.
Okay, um, number seven. This one? Yeah, that was number six. Sorry. That, number six was section seven. Number seven is at section nine. Um, just general references here. Will, do you have any issues legally?
No, I, I have already done this in my draft anyway.
Okay.
I was working on it. There's a couple of things we wanna, just some housekeeping things to make sure that, uh, we're referencing subdivision regs, that we're referencing, referencing site plan approvals, and the time limits that the planning board has to act on certain applications. So that was gonna go in anyway.
Alright, the, um.
Six and seven.
Number five has two parts. So I'm gonna hit the least controversial part first. And that is to any issue of those warehouses that have been approved, uh, for years and have gotten extensions. Right now, as our moratorium exists, they would not fall under, uh, potentially could not fall under this moratorium. So you know what? That's actually not true until we answer the first part of that question. Alright, so the first part of that question is, and this is the meat of it, is where, at what point during the planning process, do we want this law to start? This is, this is pretty much where we need to make our decision. And once we do, we'll be able to move forward and set a public hearing and create some of these changes. So I wanna bring it in layman's terms instead of just saying FEIS, from a, just a general standpoint, how does the board feel about those warehouses and distribution facilities currently in the planning process? And at what point do we want to set a threshold for this moratorium? That they would fall under this and they would, everything would have to stop and they could go in front of the board and fill out a hardship waiver. I would love some feedback in terms of how, how you guys feel about where in this process we should, we should go.
Well, if you read, um, the first sentence of the first paragraph says, town board might consider a threshold of an adapted neg, neg deck, negative declaration or a secret finding statement prior to the effective date of the law.
Correct.
I mean, there's two ways you can look at it. If you got a positive declaration or a negative declaration during the planning sub-process, during the secret process, you know, you, you kinda gotta address both of them. But if we go based off the finding statement and the neg deck, that would be one way of.
Right. So basically, that would say anyone who has their final environmental impact statement would, would be exempt from it. And those, anyone who do not have either a neg deck or an FEIS would fall into the moratorium. That's what, and it's how, that's how that is written in, in section five. And I, my, my question to the board is how do you feel about that?
I think the FEIS, if it's accepted and is filed, I think that should be a good point.
Anything before that gets halted?
But if there's a neg deck, there's a five, if there's an EAF submitted and there's a finding, uh, a neg deck that there's no adverse impact, that's, you don't have to do a draft environmental impact statement. So they, so it's, they kind of go hand in hand. Either you get a neg deck and you don't have to do any further secret, or there's a pos deck and then you have to go forward with, uh, a DEIS. And then, once that's accepted with a finding statement, then that's the same thing as getting a neg deck, basically.
Correct.
So the DEIS, if the, the acceptance of the DEIS is.
A draft, a draft DEIS.
That's, that's a little bit, yeah. Then if there's a DEIS submitted and being complete by the planning board, then there will have to be a final finding statement by whoever the lead agency is. So that's why they have a secret finding statement here.
So.
You guys wanna take a look at this? Do you wanna see how the flow chart goes for the secret process?
Yeah, I mean, we, we.
Does that help? Okay.
We can go through that.
Yeah.
But the, the bottom line is, is either a neg deck or a finding statement that, that's been accepted, that approved.
But I think we do need to have both of them because you can hang.
Yes, correct.
Yep.
Yeah, there's.
Absolutely.
You would need both because you, you need some for every angle.
That's their recommendation.
Yeah.
Then how cool.
That's the, that's.
I mean, you would be okay with a neg deck and FEIS, I assume, Chris?
Finding statement.
Finding statement.
Yeah, I, so, so just to be clear, let's bring it down with a few steps. The neg deck, I'm good, but, but the finding statement, so if they have not reached the finding statement, they will be halted under this law.
If we decided to go with that language and, uh.
And that's the version that's adopted by the town board.
Correct.
Now, this, what we're doing here is getting ready to schedule, you know, get this thing in whatever language from this and any other changes that the board wants to make and have this thing ready for a special meeting next week.
So, right, so basically, we could do, we could clean up the document and later on in the agenda, we're having a special meeting to call next Wednesday for IDA interviews. So it could be floated around and then at the beginning, before we start the interviews, we could have a clean version and just set the public hearing at that point, if you're more comfortable with having it in front of you with these changes. And that's what you're referring to. Yes.
Okay, so yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. Cindy, any thoughts?
I don't, the neg deck, I was thinking draft the EIS, did she say an FEIS?
Correct. Those are two completely different points in the process. They would have different effects. So we just need to be clear as a board, as a group, and come to a consensus as to what part in this process we're gonna be drafting this. And again, this is for the public hearing. This is to draft a local law to set a public hearing. And then provide, get the community and then anyone else to provide some feedback, uh, measure what those effects might be. And during the next couple of weeks, we would have time to do that.
Including the county.
Including the county, which has to weigh in.
I was saying draft DEIS myself, too.
Ron, what do you think?
Are we talking to projects in the system that are greater than or less than a certain amount of square footage?
We're not there yet.
No, we're not there.
We're not there yet.
That, that wouldn't affect what we.
No.
No, this is in general.
That's a different part of the discussion.
That'll be, that'll be after this. Right now, I just wanted to hit the planning board points. And this was the biggest point we knew that we were gonna hit, the biggest decision we're gonna have to make. And whether or not we're going to start this moratorium with a finalized FEIS or DEIS is the conversation that I believe is our biggest issue to get over.
I guess my answer to that is that I'm not knowledgeable enough to make a decision right at this time.
Okay.
I'm honest and I can do it.
Let's do this. Let's come to.
I'm teaching.
Let's, let, we gotta, we gotta come to a consensus, right? This is something we can always change if we have to, based on feedback from the public. Um, I think at the end of the day, we have to make a decision on it. Uh, I don't, I mean, we just, we have to make a decision on it.
Yeah, I was just going based off, I'm sorry.
The planning board, right.
Yes.
I see, I see exactly where you're going with it. It's what the planning board wrote down and it's a starting point. Doesn't mean we're married to it, we can change it, but that would be the starting point that we reveal to the public on how this would be presented. And if we got feedback and we decided to change our minds, we can do that, or we can go forward. We, we don't know how the public's gonna react, we don't know how the feedback's gonna be. And I think the really important part tonight is to get there, to get a local law drafted instead of a public hearing. So we'll go down the line. Alright, uh, we'll, we'll basically just create the FEIS or DEIS. Alright, and obviously that includes neg deck and the other things we discussed. Kristen? What do you think? Even though you already said it.
Can I go last?
Oh, we're not voting, we're just talking.
We're just having a consensus building.
I'm, I'm gonna go based off what, what the planning board recommendation was of a, of a neg deck and, and, um.
An accepted FEIS.
Or a secret finding statement.
A secret finding statement.
Gotcha.
I don't go with the draft DEIS.
Okay.
Same here.
Alright. Ron?
I'll go with the draft also.
Okay, I think this.
When it's accepted by the board.
Correct.
When it's deemed, the way I put the language is when it's deemed submitted and complete in proper form by the lead agency.
Let me ask you this, Will. Cause this will become a contention in terms of the public comments. Yep. If we go forward and we draft the local law at the DEIS standpoint, but if we get enough public comment and we decide we wanna change that to FEIS, is that going to trigger another public hearing?
Yes. It's gonna trigger, it's going to trigger a resubmission to county.
Right. So it's a big decision.
It's a, that, one could argue is a substantial change. Cause that's gonna really be a different trigger for exemptions. So I would advise the board, if that change is gonna be made, we would want to at least get it back to the county. And we would wanna have it expedited, continued public hearing.
Alright, well, we have a majority of the board that wants to start at that point for our draft.
And that's how I'll draft it.
Alright, let's get to a couple of other points before we end this, end that move forward. Alright, so, well, let's talk, let's go back to the conversation about square footage. I know that you guys wanted to return to that conversation. Uh, do you have a threshold that you want us to consider to put into this draft moratorium?
Well, in the original, we were at a hundred thousand square feet and, um, I had talked to a couple of people and the different board members at different times and, um, agreeable to go down to forty thousand with three doors or less.
Okay, so that hits one of the planning board points. Um, and.
Number two.
Correct.
There's the size. Was there a size?
No, no, not the planning board, the, the, I was talking about the truck. Yeah.
Three bays.
Yeah.
So, so the, the bays was supposed to also address potentially the size issue to a degree.
Right.
Um, but you, you guys are suggesting that we also put a threshold on square footage at forty thousand?
Correct. That those people do not, I mean, under forty thousand.
Would not fall under our, our moratorium.
Right, and, and our hardship.
Okay.
With three doors or less.
Alright.
In case it's considered to be a warehouse that's either attached to a new business coming in or even, you know.
No, I get where you're at.
One that wants to add on.
I think we've gone through it, um.
So I'll say that I was sadly not one of the people that you spoke to, cause we did not have a conversation. I wish we did. But, um, you know, my concern is that, I, I ran some numbers just quickly cause I, I know you had spoke about the furniture warehouse. And your concern was that if a furniture guy redoes, um, furniture, he needs a warehouse, twenty thousand square foot warehouse. Um, based off of estimates of parking lot sizes for a twenty thousand square foot warehouse with a thousand square foot or, or footage or whatnot. Basically, my one comment that I wanna say is that size will trigger, twenty to twenty-five thousand will trigger a switch.
Bless you.
Um, the stormwater pollution prevention plan. So, you know, that's what size we're talking about and that is a, a cost to the applicant. I just, I feel like once we get out of that size range, we're going now into the, the larger scale commercial. We're not, that's not thinking about this smaller guy with the furniture warehouse. Um, to me, which is what I wanted to address, because I know that was your concern. But a forty thousand square foot warehouse with.
I'm sorry, Ben.
Sorry. With, um, with three docks, um, are we, that's, that's pretty big. Um, that's still a larger sized warehouse that, and that, and also, I mean, I, I know we gotta get into the size, but are we talking about that you put on an existing site with other warehouses? So that way people could potentially expand their operation?
Two and a half thousand.
Another forty thousand, like, is that a concern? Cause we already have one site where there's three warehouses to add up to over a hundred thousand. That was just in front of the planning board not too long ago.
You're talking about the seventy-six and the forty-nine? Yeah, okay.
You see what I'm saying? Like, when you start adding up warehouses, like, I get, I, I do wanna address the furniture guy. And, and the smaller guys, if they need an accessory storage off an existing building, we don't wanna hurt our, our small scale businesses.
That's what I was gonna say. The retail locations can be differentiated, if that's what we're getting. Warehouse and distribution facilities, we're not, you know, the way we're writing this, we're not considering the retail, you know, any retail component, they're just straight up, they're not selling anything in the, in the front of the property. As opposed to, you know, what we were talking about last time was the, um, you know, a furniture retail center right there that has some storage on the, on the property, that's.
They wouldn't be part of this, is what you're saying, the way we're writing.
That's what we, I think the consensus of, unless.
Yeah, no, you're, you're, you're there.
We wanna take part in that when we get the final version.
Yeah, I wasn't, I, I, I wasn't on that track, but I am now. Yes.
Is that what you guys are talking about or are you talking about something else?
I was talking about, I was using that as an example. And we started out at a million square feet, that's what we're concerned about, cause we have two.
A hundred thousand. Well, yeah, we were concerned about a million, sure.
The main concern is we had two million dollars, million square foot rentals. So then, I, we brought it down to a hundred thousand. And then last week, I think Sherry said fifty thousand. So I did some talking too and I did not talk to you. I said, well, I wanna bring it down to forty thousand and try to show, you know, we gotta try to bring it down to a reasonable level when some of the concerns are not, again, is it Amazon we're concerned about or is it truck traffic or is it what? So I thought forty thousand is a reasonable amount of square footage to exclude forty and below from, from the moratorium. But, that's it.
I mean, if it could be a forty thousand square foot warehouse with three or less doors, then depends if they like make something there or, you know, if you can fall under those pretenses, then they are, have to come in for a hardship.
Whatever the majority of this board goes through, decides to do, we decide to do, um, and I'll support it and we'll, we'll just try to make the best law possible. But I've reiterated and, and I do think we have a very fair hardship clause that will allow us to take these issues case by case. But if you guys wanna set a threshold and you have a number, I mean, that's the majority of the board's prerogative. But I do think Will has drafted a, a, a moratorium law that addresses our ability to take it one issue at a time and address the concerns through the hardship clause. But again, it, it, you know, let's have the conversation, let's come to an agreement.
I'd like forty thousand square foot.
With three or less doors.
With three or less doors.
With three or less doors.
Bays.
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 Docks.
Docks.
Their docks are.
Okay.
Is that what I'm doing?
Well, you got two square foot on, Sharon.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, so that's the majority. And, uh, I think at the end of the day, uh, we're, we're not talking about a lot of different cases, so it's, it's something that we'll move forward on.
We already have, I think, four buildings that are tenants, unless it's changed.
So that's, that's the last topic, not the last, but the next topic I wanna hit. Um, there are some businesses that have been approved and are on extensions, um, for years. Right now, they wouldn't come within our moratorium law. They would be able to continue to get extensions. Right now, they wouldn't come within our moratorium law, they would be able to continue to get extensions because they have their final DEIS, or obviously, they, they have their FEIS. So do we wanna address that, is what the planning board is asking us. Uh, I don't see how we can, but if you guys have some creative ideas. Basically, these are approved warehouse projects that haven't done anything yet. They're waiting on the market, they're waiting on whatever, and they're just kind of hovering.
If they're, if they seem to be approved already, then-
They're approved, yeah.
You can't, I mean, they can't go into a moratorium after they're already approved?
They're asking if we wanna address it within our moratorium law, and I think legally, we'd probably need some advice on how we would do that if we wanted to.
I can build in some language.
I think, like, some of these are really old.
They're really old, ten years old, some of them.
You know, why would they decide to start now, and they've already gone through all that, why shouldn't they?
I hate to even say this, but I feel like one of these projects actually is having a new application come in, so they may-
Some of these, so-
Exiting this up, that's fine too.
So at the end of the day, what we decide to do, if we decide to, say, carve some language in, I think what the planning board could be looking for, I don't wanna speak for them, cause they're not here, is potentially getting movement. And if we are the catalyst to allow them to get at least some movement, or some decisions being made on what they're going to do, whether it's a reapplication or moving forward, what we do might be able to, um, to move that along, if we wanted to go that route. Do you guys understand what I'm trying to say? All right. So if we decided in, in our draft law to potentially put language in there, we might, they might go in front of the planning board and ask, you know, to, uh, to move along. I don't know how that's gonna be written in, to be honest with you, Will, but I trust you that you have the ability to do that.
I need to look at the approvals that they have.
I was gonna say, it's, they might be three or four different cases.
Yeah, they actually, at the last, not this past one, they were meeting, but one before they extended them.
Correct. So, we would look at some language?
I mean, if they're already approved, then he gets listed on the-
I don't know, I, I-
I will get, I will get the latest extension approval resolutions from the planning board, and that'll guide me, that'll guide me in how I can factor in approved projects that are on extension.
Okay, so we're gonna look at that language on twenty-seventh, cause you're gonna have to- The, the special meeting we haven't set yet.
I'm gonna have a draft ready to go with all of these items before that meeting.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna have it due probably by, I guess, will be Monday, Tuesday at the latest. And you should be able to set a public hearing at discussion.
Great, that way we don't lose time on, on the date that we select for the public hearing.
Can we set the date for the public hearing for it to be the first regular board meeting in March? That, that does give us enough notice, right?
If we, on the twenty-seventh for the fifth.
It's not gonna get published until I meet.
And it doesn't have to go to the county, and they've got days and-
Yeah, you gotta give them thirty days.
Well, we can have the public hearing, we can have the public hearing while we're, the first public hearing while we're waiting to hear back from the county.
But you better be for the-
But it's gonna have to be referred to the county, and we're gonna have to, uh, refer it out to, uh, the planning board and someone, uh, so the first meeting in March is, you gotta say.
We could also set a special public hearing date.
You can do, you can do whatever day.
And I think at the end of the day, this issue is gonna warrant it. I mean, I don't even know if Benny will hold that public hearing, to be honest with you, so to, to even put it on a regular meeting might not be a good idea anyway.
I would do a separate date.
I have, I have a question, and we, we just decided on the size, is can we add a clause in there to be sensitive in a certain proximity to structures such as schools or residential housing?
Well, it's really, right now, it's, your houses go where they're going, it's, you know, we're, we're not changing the zoning of it, if it's, if a property is owned for warehouses and, and distribution centers, it's owned for it right now.
Yeah.
So the moratorium isn't really, that's really gonna be something that's gonna be addressed in the comp plan.
Right.
And changes, right now, we're talking about a moratorium, not a zoning change.
Okay, but aren't we working with the moratorium so that we can do the comp plan zoning change, or am I getting these two mixed up?
No, but if there's gonna be a change to where warehouses can be, uh, built in the town, that's a separate question for us. And that will, you know, before the comp plan is totally changed and adopted, then the town would maybe wish to do something about that. The moratorium is the moratorium. About what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else related to this moratorium law, so before Will presents us with, uh, what will become, uh, what we have set for a public hearing? I will get some dates together with you guys, based on, I know Ron's got some time away. We'll figure out a date that makes sense in March for the public hearing, and then we'll know this at on the twenty-seventh, okay? Anything else before we move on? All right, thank you, guys. All right, moving on to introduction of local law number two of twenty twenty, used car law. Uh, this is-
Used car sales.
Used car sales, sorry. This is something we discussed, Will, do you wanna go into the definition? I know you made some changes here.
Yeah, the last, at the last meeting, I expressed a little bit of concern in using verbatim the town Crawford's definition. And you may recall, we had some discussions about vehicles that arrived at used car lots that weren't in running condition, went around the block a little bit on that. And I was asked to make some changes to that. Councilwoman Brown actually said some, some language that I thought was helpful, that came out of, uh, out of the DMV rules and regulations. So what I did was I removed the reference, let me read the whole thing. Definition of used car sales, as, as I have it written now, mostly from Crawford, a little change. The sale of used vehicles, whether or not in conjunction with the sale of new vehicles, but excluding the sale of salvaged vehicles, vehicles with a salvage title, and/or vehicles for which title has been transferred to an insurance company in settlement of a claim for damage thereto or theft thereof. Okay, so I took out the language about the running condition, and-
That was a little-
It was a little, little loose, as we like to say, and it was a little bit subjective, as, as we talked about, car could be out of running condition, it has a flat tire, or a dead battery. So rather than defining running condition, we, we limited this definition to some title issues, including salvage title and insurance company title transfers. So as it's written now, uh, I think we can, if the board is satisfied with this, we can move forward and schedule a public hearing, unless anybody's got some other changes.
I'm good.
No, I think, I think that's the one, which-
This would be our third one for March fifth, I wanna say?
I really don't think this one's gonna be particularly controversial and time consuming.
Okay.
Now, it is a change to the zoning code, so that will have to be referred to the county as well, but we can still have the public hearing.
All right, so-
Our change to the zoning code has to go to the county under two thirty-nine F.
Okay, so we can add it to the fifth, is what I'm saying, since this is-
Someone wants to make a motion.
All right.
Will, will we be able, uh, our notice time is okay?
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Uh, yeah.
Okay.
You get me one tomorrow?
Oh, yeah, public hearing hours?
Yep.
Yeah.
So would anyone like to make a motion to set the public hearing for intro, introduction of local law number two of twenty twenty, used car sales, uh, for March fifth, um, seven PM or sometime thereafter?
I'll make that motion.
And, um, within that motion for the town board to declare this to be a- declare this to be a type-two action under secret, uh, requiring no further action, cause it's administrative code updating.
All right, get it moving. Motion good, seconded by Ron, any discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any standing? Motion carried. All right, thank you, guys. All right, moving along to town ethics law, this is just an update. The town ethics board met last night, if you guys recall. At one of our recent meetings, um, we asked the town ethics board to provide us feedback in regard to making changes to the ethics law. So they had a meeting last night, uh, they have agreed to endeavor into getting back to us. The goal is by the work session in March, with their recommendations, we would then take those recommendations, do some internal discussions on our own, and figure out exactly what types of changes we wanna make into the law for the ethics. That's all I really had to bring up on that issue. So if you guys don't have anything else, we'll, we'll move on.
All right.
Good.
Okay. Uh, all right, next, uh, live stream of town board and planning board meetings. You all should have an up-to-date, um, live stream, kinda summary, cost, schedule. Will and I had an internal discussion on our procurement policy and an inability to find other individuals that provide this specific type of service. So we are just trying to figure out if this falls under professional services, how this works, if we absolutely need to figure out, track down bids. But for the board's sake, there was two, um, arguments made when I was talking to acquisitions about this. One was providing us with the capital improvements we would need to be able to live stream ourselves, have it sit there, hit record, and not have anyone manage it. You run into issues with, pull up the, you know, the wifi, it not being manned, and you know, nobody really knows, and it's recording, and you get it later. So for viewership, and to make sure to have a, a viewer experience that gets people to actually want to be able to, to listen to the meetings, and not have to worry about some of those issues and it falling off, the more times it does that, the less people are gonna tune in the next time. So it increases the amount of people that watch. And when you take a, a look at the cost, it's a couple thousand dollars more to have someone near and monitor it. Acquisitions obviously offer is way far and above, they do different camera angles, and they make the, the viewer experience, you know, something that I think helps add to the amount of people that wanna watch it and share it. So that's, that's what my argument would be. And in terms of transparency, I think, um, the state law really mandates IDAs to be livestreamed, but I think this is something that's gonna continue to flow through on all boards in the future. So I believe we're getting ahead of this. I think this is an eventuality for town boards, and I think it's been useful. There's been employees that, you know, missed the meetings, but they'll watch it livestream, and they've called me and said, hey, there's some issues you had here, this is a, a bit inaccurate, uh, and we fixed it. So there's a lot of people that, that watch it, uh, whether it's on replay or live streaming, and it's really engaging our community in a way that I don't think they've ever been engaged before. And obviously, it started with RPM doing it, and this is us just kind of making sure that it's not upon a community organization, but it's institutionalized within the Town of Montgomery going forward, this is, this is what we should do.
And it's required.
And it's gonna be required. It's go, it's not required yet for town, town boards, is it?
No.
But it's going, it's going to be, it's going that direction, yeah.
So when we do this, is he going to have our own Facebook, that he's gonna do it on?
He is doing that right now. It is right now, uh, the Town of Montgomery Facebook page, he also shared it to acquisitions, because he has a, a following, and it made more sense at least to start, while our-
So it is, what is our Facebook?
Town of Montgomery. If you search Town of Montgomery, we have a Facebook page.
Okay.
And we gotta continue to build that, and I'm gonna work on that myself. But the idea of also him sharing it to his page and of other pages was to increase viewership, and so people knew what was going on. And in the future, our goal is, it's just gonna be on our page, and more traffic will come to our Facebook page. And then also, hopefully, we can link this to our website, so that if people don't have a Facebook page, there's a way for them to also livestream it in real time. That's an application that we want to be able to produce, because not everybody has a Facebook page. Uh, so we're starting out like this, but the goal is for it to be as accessible as possible in a lot of different mediums.
So you might be able to go to our website and watch it?
That's the goal, it is the goal eventually, live. I, I think we can get there at some point, yeah.
So that was one of mine, the second one was, um, and I have talked to Billy about this, and I, I've talked to each one of you guys, but just to talk to you guys. Um, I did get two complaints about previous livestreaming experiences.
Yeah.
The problem was, there wasn't enough wifi service, actually, we were, uh, in the IDA meeting when the issue came up. Right now, I believe, and if Billy wants to come to talk to us, he can further explain this, but what's happening is, he's on the public server, and when the public, when everybody tries to access that, that brings down his signal strength, and that's when he has problems broadcasting it.
So we'll have to talk to Nick.
I talked to Nick today.
So Cindy, Cindy actually had a follow-up on this, go ahead, Cindy.
I talked to Nick, and he's gonna come in and look at that, and, um, see if we can mute that up or see if it's throttled down.
But the, the solution would be to beef up the potential public server, to ensure we don't have those issues, and not allow access to independent companies, to our private server. Sounds good.
And my other question is, we, where is this money coming out of?
Good, so I have that. So I have a memo here from Bernard, and we actually found twenty thousand dollars in a line that's been recurring for many years now, uh, that's in the transportation department, that's been over budgeted. Uh, it was for repairs for buses, and we've never reached a certain threshold of the eighty-five thousand dollars in that line. So there was going to be a transfer from that line to the super, a supervisor's line, uh, one of the administrative lines.
It's gonna go in the supervisor's line?
Very.
You don't wanna make its own line?
We can't, we are of an adopted budget, right? So we would have to put it with, with one of the, uh, lines that's currently in our budget. So that's the one that we identified that we could use under, and then in twenty twenty-one, we would create its own line that we can itemize. I'm trying to find that one. So I guess the question is, can we move forward on this proposal right now, or do we have to wait on that procurement issue that we talked about?
I, I think that, um-
It's, it's a service, isn't it, or?
Professional service is what we were talking about, go ahead.
You can do it under professional service, if, if, if you've tried to locate other companies that can do this for the same relative price, you know, it's a professional service, if you wanna go with it tonight, or if you wanna look around, you can do that too.
I had a couple conversations with local marketing firms that didn't want to do it, haven't gotten to the stage yet of offering it as a service to municipalities, they-
Well, that's, that's-
It's going to come.
For that, it's a verbal, right, to verbally go to three people.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Yeah, and the only information I can give the board, and one of the other municipalities I represent, they're looking to do it as sort of a, drop the equipment in, and whoever's running the meeting turns it on, and there's one camera, and it's not, it's not quite the same, uh, service.
I mean, we could look at that in the future.
Yeah, but if, I would, I would regard this as a professional service, and if you wanna move forward with that proposal this evening, I don't see any problems with, uh, under GML one oh three doing it.
Okay, and then I think what we would do is not to exceed a certain threshold. So if we say we don't want it to exceed, you know, ten thousand dollars, if it gets to that point later in the year, we would have to revisit it. Uh, but we are kind of moving twenty thousand to the supervisor expense line, uh, so whatever number we wanted to move, we can. We can move a larger number than ten thousand, and then have some wiggle room, so that we don't have to do another budget transfer, or we can just allocate more funds. So whatever you guys wanna do, we found twenty thousand that we can transfer to this line, I have a line item numbers right here. So before I make a motion, I just wanna get a little concurability on what number out of the twenty thousand you wanna move.
Are you in kind of planning board too?
Yeah, sorry, so this is town, uh, board and planning board. This includes two town board meetings a month, and two planning board meetings a month. We will do special meetings.
Right.
Um, and then that's why it might go over that threshold, so that's when we would have to revisit it. And, and the, and the proposal is a hundred fifty dollar setup fee, which includes the first hour. And that was a reduced proposal, the original one was the setup fee, and then a hundred dollars an hour for every hour. Uh, the new proposal, which saves thousands of dollars over a period of one year, had the first hour included in the setup fee. So if you budget it based on three hours, you know, from the beginning of the year till the end of the year, it's around a twelve thousand dollar number. So we can-
So he's been doing this since first of the year?
Yeah, he'd get, correct, he would, he would-
And this has been grass?
No, he, he would get, uh, he would get retro, correct?
Okay.
Hit it.
Oh, okay.
The agreement would be effective January, on to December thirty-one.
Correct.
So this is not covering the planning board, it's for sessions?
No, it, it does not cover the work chats, work sessions, no, just the two, um, two meetings per month.
That's what they wanted, right?
Correct.
And the clock stops when we go into executive session?
Correct, yes.
Carry it forward.
That's correct.
And you're budgeting for three hours?
Yeah, we're budgeting for three.
On average.
On average, right, so we might have a meeting that's-
For the rest of the year, we'll all get one hour meetings.
I always have a budget for the twenty. We have a lot of special meetings coming up.
Yeah, we do.
And public hearings, and if there are public hearings on separate dates, those are gonna have to be-
Yeah, sure.
Cause a, a board meeting is convened, and then you go over to the public hearings.
Absolutely.
Did you talk to, uh, who was the Pete, would, is that his budget?
Yeah, he was, he was completely on board, Pete was great, yeah, um, yeah, and-
He knows you're taking money out of it.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah.
Didn't require that, did he put in that, his budget when he?
No, no, he, I mean, he, what was submitted was the same thing that has been submitted for the last four years. And at, for the last four years, we've been under budget pipe. I think one year, it went all the way up to sixty-five of the eighty-five, but that was because there was a massive overage in repairs. The reason also that makes this unique in this line is, we just got up to county, and I was gonna announce this later, but we're actually getting three new buses this year, for a dial-a-bus, which is really gonna help in the maintenance costs. Uh, so we really believe in this specific line, we're completely safe in transferring at least- So we really believe in this specific line. We're completely safe in transferring at least 20, probably more, but definitely at least 20.
Let's start out with 20.
Okay, so it'd be a motion to transfer $20,000 of the budget line, Transportation A 5630.0400, to Supervisor Expense Line A 1220.0400.
For the purpose of we have to authorize you to enter into the contract.
Correct. So I was going to do the budget transfer first, and then the other motion the second. Okay, so motion made by Sherry, seconded by Cindy. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried. I do have a copy of that line. If you guys really want to see it, I can send it to you in terms of the last four years, where it's been. There's a lot of those lines.
This, in the last sentence, I'm not sure if I like the agreement in writing with sufficient notice.
All right, so that's guaranteed services, but for example, I think two days' notice the other day, and he responded. So I think that's just to protect, so that we couldn't let them know as far ahead in advance to guarantee the services, but in the one instance-
I mean, to terminate the agreement in writing with sufficient notice.
Oh, okay, termination schedule, okay.
Yes. I mean-
30 days.
You want 30 days?
30 days.
Okay.
Can we change that? Word up?
As we would need it if-
Sufficient notice. That could be like whatever he-
We got a thumbs up.
Sufficient notice could be 60 or no notice.
No, we would need at least 30 days to get somebody else on board to, if it's terminated by the vendor.
Or by us.
Well, by us, quite honestly, I'd rather we be able to terminate it tomorrow if we wanted, but in fairness to both sides, what we want is 30 days, so the town has sufficient notice to get somebody else in.
So we can take sufficient notice out and put 30 days?
Yeah.
That's okay with you?
We're exchanging the words, sufficient notice for 30 days.
Sufficient notice to 30 days.
That's fine.
All right.
Terminates the agreement in writing on 30 days' written notice. Or terminates the agreement in writing on 30 days' notice.
All right.
Either party?
Yep.
With or without clause?
I mean, it's at Will's surface, yeah. Okay, so Will, you want to help me with the motion here in terms of?
Motion to authorize a supervisor to enter into an agreement with acquisitions marketing of Montgomery, New York for the purposes of live streaming two town board meetings and two planning board meetings per month pursuant to a written proposal dated February 20, 2020, as amended at the work session this evening.
Anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Billy, you have anything?
Just want to make a comment. The seven days that we're talking about sufficient notice for the meetings, the two of each for the two planning board, the two board, those are covered. The other ones that pop up, like the special meetings-
Yeah, correct.
Two, four is like we had 30 minutes prior on Friday.
Yeah.
So that's what, I'm just trying to avoid those kind of happening, and we can't cover you in 20 minutes.
Understood. I think Councilman Melik's concern was this sufficient notice clause, and I think I got that mixed up with the seven days. I don't think there's an issue with the seven days notice.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion amongst the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried. Billy, thank you for providing the service, even though we didn't have any sort of agreement for the last couple months.
What about us?
Oh, RPM, of course.
They do it for free.
You guys have been tremendous in terms of communicating with the residents over the last year and a half.
Very simple.
Truly appreciate the service. All right.
Do it for 50 an hour?
I will say that actually, the people that complained went to the RPM site and watched it when they couldn't watch it on acquisitions because of the data.
And I think it's not a shot at another organization doing it, but I think it's going to become law, and it's going to be something that we have to do anyway. And I think it's us getting ahead of it and institutionalizing it within the town. We certainly appreciate your efforts. They definitely have gone a long way in terms of educating our community on the issue, so thank you. Seriously. Thanks, Tom, for inviting me to actually make that comment. I do mean it. I know, always. Okay, moving on. I think these are going to be relatively not exciting. B, resolution to approve court audit for 2018 by New Jean Housler. Cindy, we did get a clarification. That specific request was for year ending 2019, for March 2020. However, there was another request made that we never responded to.
Okay.
So that's correct, but we can't do the second one yet because the audit hasn't been done yet. Does anyone have any questions on this before we make a motion? This is a court audit that was done. It's more of a report than an audit, and they did a fantastic job, basically, with the show. I think there was one issue. Okay, the motion is to approve a resolution to approve court audit for 2018 by New Jean Housler, made by Councilman Melik. Anyone second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say they did a really good job. When I read through it, I was very impressed by the level that was discussed during it and how great our judges and court officers are.
Awesome. I agree. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried. Next is a resolution regarding receiver of taxes records destruction. This is going to be a simple motion, actually, not a resolution. Will, can you just give us a quick brief on this?
Periodically, what?
We do it all the time, so sorry. I need to interrupt you.
Yeah, this is periodically, older records that are no longer required to be kept by various departments can be destroyed under our record retention policy. So here we have school tax bills for 2012, 2013, paid receipts, unpaid reports. There's the retention requirement is six years. We're going back seven, eight years on those. And the town and county bills, the retention requirement period is six years for the paper stuff, and this is to discard the 2013 records, which were a year plus on. So someone wants to make that motion for the destruction of those records?
I'll make that motion. Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried. Resolution for amendment number four to the 2016 Title III B contract. Basically, this is us with the Office of Aging. This is an amendment that we're authorizing me to approve that allows us to get reimbursed some $37,000 and change. These things are edited often, so this is us just executing our agreement that has been edited.
Amended.
Amended.
Is the amended amount $37,639?
Yep.
Okay.
And for 2016? Well, the original agreement was 2016.
It's been amended several times.
It gets amended every year. We're now doing the amendment for the effective period of January 1, 2020 to December 31, 2020. The amount of the county reimbursement is exactly the same, $37,639 specifically for the senior transportation program.
Reimbursement. So we need a resolution of the town board of the Town of Montgomery authorizing the town supervisor to execute an amendment to the agreement for vendor services with Orange County, providing transportation services for senior citizens. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried. E, board to approve motion to guarantee payment for Walco Valley Cemetery Association line of credit, $30,000. This is something that we all have done over the last several years. I think under Supervisor Hayes, it began. We have a budgeted line. There are cemeteries that we assist right now. Walco Valley Cemetery is one that is proactive in the sense that they get a hold of money through a line of credit, and when we pay them, they reimburse the line. So this is us just getting them the ability to get the money sooner, in a nutshell. Would anyone like to make a motion, guarantee payment for Walco Valley Cemetery Association line of credit, $30,000?
I'll make. I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Oh.
Abstaining?
Yes.
Because this line is with Walco Cemetery space.
Thank you, Cindy. Appreciate that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Cindy? Yep? All right, motion carried. Thank you, guys. F, New York State Town Clerks Association meeting registration. This is coming from our clerk's office. There is a backup right here. Does anyone have any questions before we make a motion? So this is the New York State Town Clerks Association Annual Conference in Albany for February- That's not- Sorry, that's the date of the-
April 26.
April 26.
April 29. It's the New York State Town Clerks Association. It's in Albany this year. I budgeted money. I go every year. The costs are as follows. The hotel package, which includes the lodging and the food, is $717. The conference registration fee is $185.
Okay.
And there is a question here about her using her own vehicle or using a town vehicle. Is this one of the options?
She's authorized to use the town, but do you prefer to use your personal? Is that it?
I do, and actually, I'm not authorized to use the town vehicle because I've never given him my driver's license.
Oh, all right.
Pete wants my driver's license.
And you won't give it to him?
And I've never, well, there's never been a nice fleet out there to use.
The way you drive is good for the car.
I have my own vehicle in my car, and we do reimburse it. It's still in the reorganization meeting.
Yeah, no.
That we reimburse by the IRS rate.
All right, so the number we're approving here is budgeted already in your budget line, and it's 717 plus 185 total.
Plus mileage.
Plus mileage.
Plus mileage.
And tolls.
What's that mean? Let's just add an authorization for just a little bit of excess in case there's some incidental.
Do you want to do 1,000?
What's the total? 70 and something?
717 plus 185 plus, I think it's 4.15 each way in tolls, so it's 830. And then it's 99 miles to the hotel that we went to.
We could do 15 here. We could do 15.
I'm just saying, perhaps just to exceed, say, you know, whatever.
$115.
1,100 total? 1,200?
Just to be safe.
All right, anyone like to make the motion to approve the New York State Town Clerks Association, New York State Albany meeting in an amount not to exceed $1,200?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried. Enjoy.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, next, we are ready and excited to interview a handful of potential IDA future board members. We are also going to take the time to interview the current board members, so that will take some time. And we have allotted next Thursday, February 27, starting at 12 noon. And once we set this special meeting, I'll get in touch with all the interviewees and set up a schedule much likely with our compliance committee. I thought that process went really well, really smooth. I think we can stick to the same timeline, so I'm looking forward to that. Anyone like to make a motion to set a special hearing?
Special meeting.
Special meeting to conduct ID interviews and any other business that may come before the town board.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
2:27, 12:30 is up in the minutes.
12 to 3.
12 to 3 ideally, but there's not really an end time. You can put on a notice, but yeah.
Can we also put more in discussion on that one, so that way we can get it cleaned up and set the public hearing?
So we already did that in the motion by saying any other town business, and that is our intent. Okay. Yes. All right, next is to set a joint meeting on an annexation application that we have in with the Village of Walden for March 24, 2020, 6:30 PM. This would be us going to the Village of Walden for the regularly scheduled meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, 6 o'clock.
Two board members here.
No, not our regularly scheduled.
It's not? It's special?
It's 6 o'clock.
Oh, 6. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you. All right, so this would be for March 24, 6 PM at One Municipal Square, Walden, New York, 12586.
Where is the meeting room?
It's on the third floor. It's called the Bradley Assembly Room. It's named after Thomas Bradley, who is the founding father of the Village of Walden.
And now he's just, thank you.
I like talking about Thomas Bradley.
Take the elevator to 3, Kristen. You'll find it.
Or the stairs. Sometimes the elevator gets scary.
Although CAC, it was used to meet on the second floor, so it's pretty easy to navigate that one.
But back to Thomas Bradley, back when the Village of Walden was the number three knife manufacturer in the country, he helped save this whole entire industry by creating a tariff and negotiating with President McKinley, and I'm going to stop now.
Thank you.
Do you want me at that meeting, or myself, or is that me at that meeting?
I'll be back tomorrow night.
Is this for the annexation petition?
Yes, yeah.
Has anybody declared itself lead agency?
Thought the village did.
I thought so too. Is that Paul?
Did you declare lead agency?
I believe that's my-
I don't think we did. I don't think we did. I don't think we did.
Let's find out. Technology. I mean, I'm pretty sure-
For noticing purposes, right?
Yes.
Well, is this going to be a public hearing or just a joint meeting?
Joint meeting.
Is it a public hearing? That's what I'm asking.
No.
So it's just a joint meeting?
Correct. Calling the village manager.
No, this is a public hearing because depending on what-
Hey, we're having a discussion, and you're livestreaming. It's on social media right now. We are trying to get a clarification on whether or not-
So it is a public hearing?
This is a public hearing, and you guys declared yourself lead agency? Yes. Okay, so at the joint meeting, a lead agency will be declared, but this is a public hearing? So you guys didn't take action, and you're waiting on us to take action to set this joint meeting?
We did take action on Tuesday night to set the joint public hearing for March 24 at 6 PM with you pending your approval.
Okay, so we're setting, we're approving on our end to participate in the joint public hearing for Thursday, sorry, Tuesday, March 24 at 6 PM at One Municipal Square in Walden, New York.
Third floor, correct.
The Bradley Assembly Room?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, we'll see you there, hopefully, if we get to the moment.
Thank you very much. We did prepare a draft note, and I'm sure you'll send yours for approval as well.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
So if-
Hold on. Go ahead.
So who is notifying all the agencies?
About the public?
There isn't any requirement to notify agencies yet until you approve for the public hearing. And then once that's done, we have a notice that'll go out to everyone that will be a joint notice. It'll all be published in the newspapers, et cetera.
All right, I thought we just said it was a public hearing. It's just a joint meeting.
No, we said-
It is a public hearing.
Okay, so we don't have to notice those, is what you're saying, which confuses me.
No, we do have to notice.
Please do. A joint notice.
Oh, once we approve the joint notice, okay.
We have prepared a joint notice that you sent to me to look at.
I got you. All right, I'm going to hang up on you now.
Okay.
We'll work it.
Bye-bye. I'm good now.
Okay, so did somebody make that motion already?
I don't think so. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make it.
Participate in the joint public hearing with the Village of Walden with respect to the annexation. Who's in, what's the applicant's name?
Pete.
It's all mine, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all mine of Orange County? For-
Tuesday, March 24, 6 PM.
6 PM, Walden Village Hall.
Third floor, rally center.
Third floor, and council for the village and the town will coordinate to give all the appropriate meeting notices published in conjunction with the clerks of both the municipalities.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. All right, next is authorization of credit card for highway superintendent and town supervisor. Sean, you want to just speak a little bit on this? You can come up here if you'd like. You good? Can you get it to work?
It's on.
All right, good. There you go.
So I've been on Bernard to get a credit card for myself for either emergency purchases or right now, we have to purchase a motor. The only place that sells it is a place in Kansas. They only accept credit cards. It's a full process, so part of the credit card policy for the town is just getting approval from the town board to carry a credit card. We've been working with two of our banks, Orange Trust or M&amp;T. I believe M&amp;T is the better one because they don't charge a fee or monthly interest rate that's paid that month, so that's pretty much where we're at. We just need approval from the board for cards.
Okay, and the limit was $5,000, and there's no fees attached to the M&amp;T bank one, correct?
Yeah.
My recommendation is that on the same account, cards be issued to the town supervisor and the superintendent anyways.
I agree with that.
Okay.
There are certain expenditures that, uh, purchasing department in the town has to make on occasion, uh, rather than the supervisor having to pull his personal credit card, uh, should the, the town issued card, obviously, any such expenditures for the credit, what?
They're going to start having a card.
Alrighty.
No, we, there, from, it, to my knowledge, we've had one, but we, we don't.
Wait, go, did we close it?
No, that's, that's actually.
I believe Bernard, I think he did close it.
He did close it, but we couldn't find the card, but it got closed, it got shut off.
The card is canceled.
Correct.
But, so, a new card, this is with, I'm sorry, is it M and T?
I believe it's with M and T.
Yes, correct.
So, uh, the motion would be for a, uh, a credit card account to be opened in the name of the Town of Montgomery with M and T Bank issuing the cards, one to the supervisor, one to the Superintendent Highways, um, with a joint combined limit of five thousand dollars. Any expenditures made to be done pursuant to the town's current credit card policy.
Can I just ask, should the deputies be able to sign on that too, because what if you're away, or what if you're away?
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that as well.
As long as I get your point. Why don't we deal with a bank that's in Town Montgomery, is M and T, why don't we deal with C Bank, just to throw that out there?
I think at the end of the day, even with our, our vendors, the, the banks that we've been with.
The bank with M and T.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what he did.
And we bank with them, to our trust.
Yeah, correct, except that I think there was fees attached to that.
To get a card.
Yeah, that's what we said.
Weird.
And Chase as well.
They give you a personal, but.
Yeah.
It was different for municipal, I don't know. Um, the motion was articulated by our attorney, does anyone want to make that motion? Any discussion?
Was the, the motion for the deputies also?
That's going to be added to our.
Yeah.
That's added to the motion, yes.
Do you second me?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried, so we have two, uh, audit abstracts to approve, the first one is audit number fourteen of twenty nineteen, uh, in the amount of, uh, fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and one cent, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Anyone second?
I'll second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried. Uh, the next is audit number one of twenty twenty in the amount of one million, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents, would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, and I will abstain from voucher number two zero zero one four three.
Okay. Motion carried, thank you.
The next is, uh, we will invoice for January and the next, uh, the next few days, we'll have that for the next round of votes.
Okay, thank you, Will. Go to the order, anything else from any of the board members, uh, before we go into executive session to discuss some personnel issues? Guys and girls, one last night.
The central girls people, FDR, last night FDR was sixteen and two, now they're sixteen and three, now the central sixteen and three.
And they're going into sections.
And, uh, I talked to Tara, we're going to set up a little box, I think, for the food pantry, I think, and maybe by the clerk's office.
Great.
And maybe up here too, so I got a pickup truck and once a week, or one, two weeks, I'll drive it to the food pantry.
Councilman Brown?
Yeah, so, um, I attended the Keep Government Local, New York is a home role state, the twenty-twenty annual meeting and training school, that was Monday and Tuesday, it's in New York, uh, Maryam, along with, uh, Will and Stephanie, so I was in very good company. Um, I attended the following classes, I did get there a little late, I had some farm issues that happened, um, but the following classes I attended, ambulance billing for municipalities and fire departments, building community resistance resilience, a N Y S D O S Office of Planning and Development Perspective, code enforcement duties and impact, uh, to the community. The next day I took the class, actually, with Stephanie, it's not right next door, considerations when drafting wind and solar zoning laws. Then, uh, the next one I attended collective bargaining, one-on-one, um, the next one spot zone or grant the illegal use scenarios, next one drinking water source protection program, and the following of fiscal responsibilities of the governing board. So, I have a lot of notes, I have a lot of the presentations, I also have the presentation from soil and water, I'm getting the presentation from soil and water conservation districts and the source buffer, source water buffer program, because I used to work under Brian Steinmuller and I saw him and I was like, ah, I'm not taking your class, but can you send me the presentation in case you guys wanted it?
Yeah.
So if you guys want any of those, I mean, it's a lot of papers, but I'd be willing to make copies and give them to you if you wanted them, just let me know.
Yeah, I have some as well.
And I can verify that she was hard at work, as she was texting, texting, messaging me photos of different things and things that we need to do. So thank you for continuing to educate yourself and ourselves on, um, best practices.
It was a good program this year, the, uh, the association did a good job.
I will look forward to going next year, couldn't make it this year. Um.
You know, it's, it's, it's very valuable, I mean, I've been a speaker at these things and gone as an attendee and they're all, they, they, they work very hard to make the, uh, the classes valuable for municipal employees and lawyers and elected officials and accountants and controllers and things like that.
Alright, now a couple of items I just want to update the board on, uh, the Town Montgomery Volunteer Ambulance Corps Task Course, um, not the AM Corps Task Corps, but the Task Corps, I think, on services with the Town Montgomery, met again yesterday, Sherry was, was yesterday or was Wednesday?
Yesterday was Wednesday.
It was.
We were on, remember we did the board tour.
And we just went there. So it's going really well, uh, we're now trying to identify some of the long-term sustainable solutions, we're going into twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, identifying all kinds of needs, we won't get into the specifics yet because there's so many and we could be here all night just talking about that, but we had a really good discussion, uh, we're adding a couple of people to that committee that have some experience working on improving services in other towns. Uh, we, we're going to do some site visits, uh, and I appreciate a share of your involvement, you've been at every meeting and I feel like it's been really productive, we really repaired to a degree, I can say, the relationship and we're building on some potential really long-term solutions.
So what's interesting is, um, the attorney that's working with the ambulance corps, the, with our ambulance corps, was the guy that taught the class.
Oh, wow.
So it was interesting, because I texted Kyle and said, who's your attorney, and then he texted back and I was like, I took a picture, and I was like, is this him? Yup. So I, I did talk to him afterwards and I know there's been issues with talking amongst attorneys, or I don't know if we need a contract with them, or do we need anything?
Eventually.
We're going to work on it.
I recommended that maybe in March, the attorneys talk, sit down and talk and move forward.
We, we, we pretty much decided the last minute, a little bit, we would wait, I mean, attorneys actually, we tried to hash out as much.
Till we get all our stuff together.
Right, to save some money, no offense.
Also, yesterday we had a meeting with the users for the fields of Benedict Park in Berea, I was with, uh, Lisa from the Town Clerk's office, she's going to be the administrative portion of the team, we're going to be interviewing for a director, part-time director, Ryan and I and Lisa met, uh, the users of our fields and they're pretty much occupied, the soccer in McCrossfield and the softball field in Berea and the football field in Berea are occupied. There is availability for the baseball slayer softball field in Benedict, so if anybody knows of an organization, you know, charitable, little leagues or Cal Ripken leagues that needs to use the field, they should see Lisa fill out the form, there is some availability.
Alright, and, uh, we are, uh, accepting resumes, the last day's tomorrow, and Ron and I plan to perform interviews for a recreation coordinator next week, and by March fifth, hopefully, you know, bring someone to the board to, as an introduction, that's our goal, to move that department forward. Um, been having some great meetings, uh, with the Town Montgomery Food Pantry, we're going to be having them on the agenda soon to see how we can support them more. Uh, Tom Sepp, had some amazing, uh, meetings with Tom Sepp, we're going to be promoting all the things they do to serve our seniors and recruit some volunteers. We had a, uh, we've had a lot of meetings, so we, we, the farmhouse at Benedict Park is something that is on our radar, we're looking at different ways to, to rehabilitate that house and to figure out, um, a, a, a meaningful, uh, use for it. So, uh, Mel, Bruce Schaper, Ed Devitt, and a handful others, Randy, Randy Green for the Village Preservation Committee, to really figure out ways to, to sustain that and, and, and create a use out of it. The, there, we want to start doing quarterly public, uh, budget reviews, so at the end of each quarter, I want to be able to come up to, to the, the public and to this board and say, hey, here we are, here's what was adopted, well, here's where we are in each line of the quarter, let everybody give feedback, it's going to be good practice for our department heads to submit information to me, uh, we're going to get on top of the budget, this current budget in this calendar year, quarterly, um, you guys are going to start receiving, we're going to try to get you monthly reports on some of these lines, I know that's something that used to happen, I like to bring that back to educate ourselves and keep ourselves on each of these lines, I think we get into a point sometimes, and municipalities do this in general, you know, we have a line, we got to spend it, let's figure out ways to spend it, we got to end that, you know, we got to make sure we cherish and maximize every single taxpayer dollar we spend, have a reason to be spending it, and I think this will be good practice in sharing with the public, have more transparency, but also put some onus on the department heads as well, and I think they're willing to do that, uh, to really figure out how we can save and that just because it's budgeted doesn't mean you have to spend it, that's a culture that we want to try to make sure to create and sustain here, so I think these quarterly budget reviews with the public and with the board are important, first one will be in April, Bernard's excited for it, I am too, and, uh, the department head meeting's been great, we've had department head meetings every week, we've changed it to bi-weekly, and there's really been a different type of continuity and feel at Town Hall that we're going to build on. I just wanted to share those things.
Bernard is doing a great job in there.
He is.
Had a lot of catch-up to do.
Yeah.
And this is a line of what you were saying, it was funny, because I was texting Brian while I was in class, the fiscal finance, uh, fiscal responsibilities of the governing board, and it says right in here, monthly reports, what should be given to all board members.
Yeah.
Budgetary reports, just that way. We don't get into the same situation that you guys were in last year, where we had negative lines, because legally, you're not supposed to do that.
Correct.
You used to get a monthly.
It's required.
So we're going to definitely be providing those to you moving forward, and I think we've gotten past in the first seven weeks, some of the initial, this is where we are, this is the process, and we're ready to, to really get, get the train moving and make sure that we, uh, set some precedent moving forward. So that's, that's our, you know, goal. Alright, would anyone like to make a motion to, uh, enter into executive sess- session to discuss personnel issues?